Thank you for all being here tonight. Hopefully you'll be able to hear me over the mask. I'm sure we're used to it by now. Before we get started and I kind of go on, can I get a motion to waive Roberts' Rules of Order?
One.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Can I get me seconded? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on.
Can we just let the record show that Alderman Kosterag is absent as is Alexa Schwab from SPAC? Everybody else is present.
Both lights.
I know. You've got to have both lights on.
Thank you. So for those who didn't hear, Alderman Kosterag is absent this evening as is Alexa Schwab from SPAC. Thank you. Do I need to turn this mic off now or just keep it on the whole time?
You can keep it on.
Okay. All right. So hello. Thank you for being here. I think most of you know me. If I haven't met you, I don't think I've met Alderman Mayor yet, but I'm Jill Johnson, the Chair of SPAC. Thanks for coming out and being here tonight. This is always a fun conversation meeting that we have between the two of us. So hopefully we'll be able to make some good progress, conversation, get some brainstorming done so we can make headway with the strategic plan and with making headway in the community. So just quickly, thanks for Ben for kind of helping us out with this and Chris Rainey and Stephanie for helping put some of this stuff together for tonight. Ben just had a baby, so it's nice to, it was nice that we had some backup this week. So this has been an interesting year for our committee, just kind of going through a few things that we've done this year. COVID's been tough to get stuff done. It's been tough to have meetings sometimes in person, but we have been able to get stuff done. Last time I think we spoke, we were working heavily on the census. We were promoting that. The results came in. I think you guys have all probably gotten them already, but they were pretty close to what we had in 2010, if not maybe even up a little bit more. But they were close, so we felt that the awareness that we raised did help it out a little bit. We also were able to work with the City Council and the City of Geneva and the municipal, the actual city and get recycling bins put out on Third Street. It's a pilot program and we're trying to see, it's just kind of a pilot program to see if it works, to see if the waste or the recycling going in is actually recycling and if it's something that we can keep. And these bins are pretty expensive, so we want to make sure that if we keep them on Third Street, they're going to be worth the, you know, time putting them out there and that they're actually doing the job that they're supposed to do. So that's something we've been working on. If you've been looking through our website, you probably have noticed we've started updating the metrics a lot more. It's a work in progress, but if you go through, if you go on a strategic plans website, there's actually a part in there that will show the exact metrics we're working on currently. Plus if you go into the plan, you can see what we've kind of tackled, what we want to tackle still. So that's been good. And I would say the biggest thing we worked on this year was getting the Diversity Equity and Inclusionary Task Force going. We had some really dedicated members on this committee that was willing to get that up and going, and we did interviews all through May. We selected someone towards the end of May, had them brought in here in June, and they have this brand-new task force. So that's been, I think that's been going on since July, their meetings. I know that Winnie is over here. She's our Vice Chair, obviously, but she also is our liaison for the Diversity Inclusionary Task Force. So if you guys have any questions specifically to how that's going, I'm sure she'd be willing to update you tonight on any progress in that. And then lastly, in September, we did put out this community survey, which you guys all should have. It's very preliminary results. So we have them. We'll talk a little bit about them. They're very long, so we're obviously not going to go through every single survey result, little by little. But just kind of a brief summing, you know, just kind of sum it up. We had 626 complete surveys this year. That was up from last time, about 110%. I think we only had like 256 surveys maybe the last time. Out of the 626 surveys, they were complete, but 800 people actually took the survey. But there's people that skipped a question, didn't finish it, just stopped. So we only counted the 626. But we did have more people that actually came out to take it. There was only about 31 people that weren't in Geneva city limits, so there was maybe some Mill Creek people, business owners, maybe someone who had visited Geneva in the past. So basically, they were consistent though with what we have seen in the past. So there wasn't, I mean, I would say there wasn't a huge, there wasn't a lot of changes. A lot of this was consistent, you know, compared to the other years. You know, the biggest thing we noticed is that people still, you know, tend to be happy with the city and the municipal services. We always get, you know, excellent to, great to excellent on all of those surveys. We did see that, you know, people always want lower taxes. There's always under the, we, people, oh my gosh, what section am I thinking? Economic vitality. People always want to talk about the taxes, lowering taxes. And then we also had people that really wanted to talk about environmental sustainability this year. Clean energy has been something that we've talked about with the community. We've discussed it amongst ourselves. And of course, with these survey results, we did see reflection of that as well, that people, you know, do want to start making the right steps to make our, you know, to make our town a little bit more, more sustainable, clean. So that's something that I think we really want to talk about tonight as we look forward to prioritizing the coming year. So I'll kind of just, it kind of brings us to this next item. And we do have this timeline up just to talk, I'll go back, just to go back to the survey real quick when we did do these surveys. The survey's open in December. We, you know, talked to the community. We went to the farmer's markets. We went to the library and we would pick people that came in or we would ask everyone that came in if they were Geneva residents, and then we would tell them to go online and fill out this survey. So that's kind of how we engaged with our, besides our city websites and social media, we were able to engage that way as well. So now we're looking at our timeline. The survey's obviously closed. We're here at our meeting, and now we need to talk about our next steps. So that kind of brings us to what I want to talk about. I know a few weeks ago, we, the City Council here passed the Chicago Region Climate Action Plan. And I know it was adopted unanimously under my understanding. I think it was nine to, I don't, I'm not sure what the, I know it was unanimous, but, so I think that with this new implementation, based on conversations with the community, I know we just hired a GRC3, a person that comes, I think that will work with us on this, that comes for, that goes to Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles, that will be working with us on goals and how to make the community more sustainable. So we felt that this would kind of be a good time to focus on environmental stewardship. You know, we felt like, you know, renewable energy gaining resources to support the environmental stewardship and educating our community is going to go a long way. We think education is probably where we're going to have to start with this, educating the community, community engagement. We'll probably have to do more listening discussions at the library. We may have to have more discussions here, but we do hope to engage with the community and educate ourselves as much as possible in the coming year. And also tonight, I guess we want to talk about, you know, if there's any individual action items that, you know, maybe may be on your minds or SPAC's minds, you know, there's been things that have been brought up. You know, obviously, we're working on the recycling bins, but there's going to be, you know, there's way more than that. And we think that it would just be a good conversation to have, and we just feel like if we're going to be sustainable by 2030, more sustainable by 2030, this is probably a time to focus our own energy on our clean energy for the town. So with that being said, I would love to open it up for questions, comments, concerns, discussion. Let me know if I went too fast and so, anybody? Anybody want to? Becky, thank you. Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. You know, I'm just thinking of the environmental concerns and just basic education. I can't tell you how many times I see like giant block of styrofoam when somebody's recycled bin or, you know, trash bag filled with who knows what in the recycle bin. It's like recycling 101.
Right.
I know. Education, I don't know. I feel like we just need more community education maybe. I don't know what to answer this, but there's a lot that we can improve on. And also, I think the main thing that I would like to educate people on is reduce and avoiding it in the first place. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Caven?
Thank you. Similar to what Becky was just inquiring about, I know that you kind of alluded to it a little bit at the beginning with those recycle bins that we put out on Third Street as sort of like the pilot project. Do we have any idea how much contamination there has been or is it mostly recyclable items? Is it having any impact or is it just being used as another trash can?
I can answer from one conversation that I had, and there has been quite a bit of waste that are still going into those recycling bins. There's obviously recyclables going in, but to my knowledge, I think a lot of it is still having to be trashed away because it's, it's still been contaminated, it's had too much contamination in it.
Okay. I was just curious because you brought it up. I didn't, I didn't know.
Thank you. On my on the scientific survey, when I walked out, I don't think I've seen one of them that wasn't so contaminated that they had to wait.
Please, Bob.
I thought Ben did have a number on that.
I thought Ben did have a number on that, and I thought he mentioned it was around like 80% that was recyclable in, those in the containers. So.
I got a different number. I had a different conversation with him, but I, it's something that is still obviously being piloted and tested out. And it's, you know, again, and that's part of the education portion of it. Are we, are we educating people enough on what to put in those bins? Are our signs, are our signs clear enough for people? I think they are, but sometimes, you know, people get in a rush there downtown. I happen to look at it a lot during Festival of the Vine. I was looking at the one by Little Traveler to be nosy, and I was looking and there was, you know, you could, people were definitely putting their waste in there. I guess it just depends on the day and the event and the time, so.
Is there a generic threshold that means landfill versus recycling?
There is, but I don't know what the number is. I remember Rich Babica from Public Works talking about the actual number, but I don't have the actual number on me right now.
I think people know, even the leastest student know that a piece of pizza is not recyclable, so I'm not sure.
You're going to need to speak closer to the mics out there. They are movable, so you can pull them up closer. Thank you.
Even the most stupid.
Sure.
Goodest reading, those are pieces of pizza is not recyclable, so I'm not entirely hopeful that education is going to be go a long way. But I always thought, I always wanted an app on my phone, you know, when I'm going through my household stuff. You know, because there's packaging like, you know, with the shrink wrap label on it?
Recyclable.
What would the shrink wrap label be?
Earth 911 is a great resource. Earth911.com is a great resource.
Thanks.
And Jennifer Jarland, King County Recycling Coordinator, is the goddess of recycling and knows everything. You can either Google her articles or reach out to her directly. Yeah, she's amazing. Yes?
Becky, the, when you reference people not recycling, you're talking about household waste? You see that down the street? It's the same people that aren't doing it on Third Street, too. I think it's a general problem with education, and I don't know, I think we have to get started, and it's going to take some time, and it's going to build. I think we, as a country, generally are behind where most of Europe is. For example, I was just in Italy for three weeks, and they have these beautiful, every place, in all these public places, three different garbage cans, different colors, they have pictures of what's acceptable in each, I'm sure they have mix as well, but I think it's a discipline that exists there better than it does here. Now, probably didn't 10 years ago, but I think it is really, that aspect I think is much more prevalent in Europe, so we have to start, so.
Thank you. Alderman Mayor?
I actually had somebody asking yesterday where our recycling, I don't know, because we were talking about, like, here are being closed now, and where does our garbage go? I think people are curious about this kind of thing. And I saw a special on Netflix, I think, that basically went over what, what happens at recycling plants and thought we're doing, but how do we get that message before, because I didn't get it to my husband, so.
That's off the record. Just kidding. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Burkhart?
Yeah, I have two things. I guess one that you go friendly front. I wonder if, as a city, we could invite Jennifer in, you know, as a partner with King County to do a presentation or, you know, brainstorm with her about how we could use all her knowledge. I mean, yeah, her, that guide she puts out are amazing and stuff. And same with the movies or, you know, maybe, you know, maybe there's, obviously, we need to talk about this a lot more, but there's obviously an appetite here to get that movement started and everything. And just in general, I wondered, just all the members of SPAC, since we're kind of all just going through this tonight, is there any, any numbers or any stats here that jumped out at any of you that surprised you or, or you felt like were particular areas to work on? I did see that twice as many women filled out the survey as men.
I did notice that, yes. There, I mean, like I said, I feel that a lot of these were pretty close to what we've had in the past. There wasn't anything that jumped out on me, except the fact that we had more people take the survey this time, which was just, the fact that people were interested enough to do it and that we were able to reach more people makes me think that there is a way to reach people with the education aspect of this, and it seemed to work out well. But I don't think that there was anything that just jumped out where I was like, whoosh, besides the people that took it, so.
I looked at it. Question 17 has, it's not surprising, but it was really good.
Sure.
And we're not taking this online, which are you most likely to be finding on a side and a fine dining, but it's a switchboard, I think, and casual dining, too. So, I mean, our restaurant, I certainly wish that we were sticking with us.
I will note, I'm sorry to interrupt. I will note, though, that there were a lot of people that answered "don't know" to a lot of this stuff, so like if there was a question about whether or not our, like our retail shops are doing enough to promote a certain subject or a certain thing, they, it, there was quite a bit of "don't know" answers. So I think some of it, too, could go back to education. Like there, you just, when you look at the survey, there's maybe some things that you just don't know because you've never gone out of your way to look for it before or you've never needed to look for it before, so. Yeah, no, I mean, again, and this is all very preliminary and we, you know, and we haven't done this huge deep dive into these results yet because we want to, you know, make sure that everything's all set before we go ahead and make some decisions next month. But it gives us, you know, good guideline on what, you know, we think we could be working on here in the, in the future. You're welcome. Yes.
Can you speak right into the mic for us, please?
I was just wondering if you had a chance to look at some of the people that are very dissatisfied? Are those the same people across all the questions generally?
There was, it seemed like there was like a five, 5% to 10% of dissatisfaction between all the different questions, so I would say it was, it was pretty accurate. It was, I mean, if there was people dissatisfied, it looked like it could have been the same people that just went all the way through and.
Right. They just teach Geneva.
Right. Yeah, maybe. Possibly, but that was.
Don't know why they were filling it out.
Yeah, no, that was pretty clear across the board. And you may correct me at any time, Stephanie, if there's something that I, because I know you've probably looked at these too, but, okay. Yes, Winnie?
Alderman Burkhart, to answer your question, since you're asking for opinions, and I can give those, not necessarily with anything following it, but one of the things I thought was surprising was the following aspects of quality of life in Geneva, that there were as many people that said "don't know," to your point, Jill, about raising children in Geneva, which I think is kind of a concerning, it just raises a bit of a flag for me, because I think having a draw as a city that is a wonderful place to have a family is something that Geneva has been proud to do for a very long time. So to see that high of a rating in "don't know," I just thought was interesting. And I think the other thing that was interesting for me was just sort of the monotone responses to Geneva as a place to retire. I don't understand that at all, but I thought it was a very interesting response that it was so equal in every category. And I'm sure there are a ton of contributing factors, because I think when people are thinking about retirement, they're thinking, you know, golfing and beaching, I would imagine, right? But I think that also might be, there are some other questions that are constant in the City of Geneva that we have about senior living that I'm sure contribute to that as well. But since you were inquiring about our opinions, those were mine.
Okay. You know, different people, we all look at them differently, and yeah, good, and thanks.
Could be available for, do you have, could be available for recent children, just because they don't have children today, if they're around here?
You know, I'm hoping that that's the case, and I would assume so, that you would just go, I don't know, I don't know what it's like to have children. But I think my only hesitance to assume that that's the case is that if I put myself in that situation, you know, even before I had kids, I still knew that I was going to eventually engage what it looked like in a town to be a good place to have children. I think the other thing that is not related to what we do necessarily here in the city is we, we do keep our eye on the schools ratings, and I think those are important as well. So again, it's just something that we keep our mind, our mind on. But yes, I'm sure a lot of it was, I don't have children or I, you know, I'm beyond that portion of my life for sure, but.
Does this stand out to you that we have a large plurality of long-term residents, more than 20 years? I don't know what the average tenure is in Geneva, but it seems like long-timers took their time to fill this out.
Anybody else have any more feedback to add?
Yeah, I would like to jump in on question number 21. I think that kind of circles back into something that we were discussing last time, Jill, which was, we'd like to explore how we can promote residents towards more cleaner and more sustainable behaviors and just decisions and priorities. So I was a little surprised that each of those different subparts to question number 21, that not likely was as high as it, as we found. So that's something that I would like to maybe explore into how we could maybe promote more of our residents to be interested in each of those items.
I think that goes well into just educating our community on solar panels. We've had a few discussions within SPAC about how the lack of access to resor, or the lack of resources on how to install solar panels onto your house and just, I mean, purely like the logistics of it are really confusing and can be complicated for our community. So it's important, again, to the education aspects of it.
And to Maddie's point, we, yes, we have been talking about this because people do inquire to the city about solar panels, and it's very, very hard to get that information because not a lot of people have done it. And because not a lot of people do it, I think a lot of people, you know, there's, no one's going to go and take the dive to do solar paneling if, A, they don't know people that are doing it, and if they don't know how to even find the information and who to contact about starting the process. Now, I know people will contact the city, but I think if we had, I think some conversation we've had is updating the websites a little more. I know now that there's an environmental stewardship portion of the City of Geneva's website, so it could be something that we could put up on the website, you know, along with all the other things that we're working on, but, you know, you have the education there. Who do you contact for the solar panels? And people aren't going to install them themselves, I'm assuming, but I think the biggest process is who can do it and, you know, the cost and just the process and all, again, like you said, all the logistics. So I think that another thing that would be worth discussing is, is the websites, whether or not this is part of the SPACs, the SPACs portion on the website where we talk about the environmental goals, or if this goes on to the City of Geneva's website, where you guys already have some stuff that you guys are working on in transition now. It'll, it'll, I think the city talks about now like what's actually going on to provoke, to promote the environmental sustainability. So that's been helpful, and I think that, you know, there are other cities that we have researched that actually have like, you know, a person that just does, just, they have a hired person that just comes in and does all, they, they get the metrics for what they need to work on, they get the action items, and they have like a whole committee for this. So I guess that's another conversation. Is this, I think this is something that obviously SPAC wants to take on, but, you know, is this something we want to partner with the NRC on? Is this something that, you know, we want to build a whole new, brand-new website on or if we just want to add it to the existing site? So I think those are also conversations that will help out with educating the public as well. Mayor Burns?
If I may, Madam Chair, with respect to solar installation, it's important to note that while the building department is your first stop, we do have a program in place that we can turn around a solar panel installation permit within 30 minutes. The issue we have discovered, as other communities have as well, is that oftentimes the success of that installation relies on the installer. Some of you may or may not be aware, installation of a solar panel also has, it touches on firefighting issues. Most homeowners aren't aware, most businesses, perhaps Mr. Swanson is, are aware that if a fire should break out in the home, there is no saving the solar panels. Those are torn off and thrown away. There's also chemicals within solar panels that prove to be a risk with respect to firefighters, so all that comes into play. I am proud to announce that we are joining a cohort soon with respect to enhancing our permit turnaround even more so, to be reflective of communities such as Bartlett, Naperville, and others. But we've already taken that first step, which is good. The biggest challenge, and I mean this respectfully, is the solar installers and the companies. I have received innumerable inquiries from solar installers saying, hey, we're ready to go, we're ready to go, we're ready to go. I received a phone call from a homeowner not long ago who was complaining respectfully about the delay in the building permit. It turned out that the solar installer never asked for the permit. So whoopsie daisy. But, so just, just for everyone's edification, there is a program in place and it runs pretty smoothly, but obviously improvement is certainly a focus.
Oh, go ahead, Billy, go ahead.
I said, would it benefit the city to put in a, like a licensing or certification program for installers to be pre-approved with the city? So then if, if residents are interested in that, they're going to go through the permit process, they know automatically who they're going to be possibly choosing to work with who's already, you know, been licensed for, like a subcontractor license almost with the city.
Well, we're not authorized to license any contractors because as a non-home rule community. We are, however, allowed to create a list of, quote, those, those companies we've worked with before that meet our satisfaction, but we can't direct a consumer to use a particular company, obviously. But if someone should call Mr. Nelson or whomever and say, hey, listen, I'm thinking of putting solar on my house, are there some companies that you've worked with before? We can provide that list, absolutely.
So Geneva in general, compared to other cities, like if a subcontractor wants to work in Geneva, they don't have to do an annual license or.
That's correct.
A $50 fee or something, and that's all due to the, with home rule?
Certainly home rule and of course, resources in order to regulate, keep track of.
Sure.
Those, those licensees, so. And I, and I should note, forgive me, Madam Chair, but because we are not in the com-ed territory, that has a huge impact with respect to solar rebates, et cetera, et cetera. We all know that the federal legislation currently percolating will have some substantial benefits should we choose to go solar, purchase an electric car, whatever. But there are some, some nuances that I think, I know Eric and his team are aware of those nuances. Some people are under the impression that it's as simple as I'll do it, and there's a lot more to it. But we can get that permit out in 30 minutes. That's not an issue.
There is a second piece, though, that I think we need to focus on, and that right now, this conversation has all been about how do we drum up interest from residents to install solar? The second piece is, we need to change some of the way we look at it from our electric utility. And by that, I mean, we have a cap on how, what percentage of the output can be net metering, which is what a solar installation is. We need to evaluate that, too. So we need to not only drum up more interest and have more people install them, we also need to look at it from a logistical standpoint in the electric division and how that's going to work.
Is that a self-imposed cap?
It's in ordinance. Yes, it is.
So technically, a self-imposed cap, right?
And we did hire a consultant to study what our capacity is by area of the city. We have not seen the results of that yet, but we should be looking at that. But I wanted all of you to be aware, we need to look at it both pieces. Drum up support, but also not have any limits. So if we hit this cap, we have to say no to people, so we have to look at both sides.
Thank you.
Tara, Ms. Alderman Burkhardt?
You, Chair. On the same question, I'm surprised or find it interesting that 30% of recipients, they plan to purchase or likely, or highly likely, to purchase an electric or hybrid vehicle in the next five years. I mean, people don't buy cars, you know, every year. Most people don't. So I think that, I mean, that is one-third of the recipients, it's likely they'll purchase one. And I wonder if there's anything we should be talking about in terms of infrastructure, about charging stations or, I know that...
Park is changing all the time and maybe it's less open, you know, five years ago that has been a station in the south, but it's kind of intriguing.
Anybody else?
There are elements of the Clean Energy, or excuse me, the Clean Equity Jobs Act that was passed in Illinois recently, that calls for legislation to be introduced for all multifamily buildings, requiring those multifamily buildings to have a charging stations. As you could imagine, it's likely to hit the fan with respect to builders, but nevertheless, that is in the law. So other communities have actually provided rebates to homeowners who actually install such chargers in their homes.
So that's a, like, remote barriers to balance, you know, a multifamily unit. I mean, so I have my own garage, I can...
Exactly. And transit-oriented development to what the case might be, right. And we have approximately eight charging stations in Geneva now.
I was going to ask that. So I know there's some at the courthouse. Do we have some in the parking garage as well?
We are examining that opportunity right now.
Okay.
There's two at the Fuller Station, there's one at the Walgreens, there's one behind the courthouse, and there are, I think, two more being planned. They're on private property, except for the courthouse. The key to a successful charging station, as I understand it, is what, if anything, do you charge? Is it $1.75? That seems to be the break-even point for some communities. Others use it as a loss leader. You're going to charge here, you're probably going to buy 10 bucks of the groceries anyways. So, to Bob's point, that would be a broader discussion as well.
Anybody else? I know that we've also talked about action items that could, other conversations just that I've heard within the community, like we've talked about tonight, are the pizza boxes that people always find on Third Street and whether or not there should be incentives for businesses that want to use paper for their, instead of plastic or dining. And I've heard people that when they do takeout, don't automatically put plastic silverware in their bags. Instead, it has to be requested. So we've heard about that. And a plastic bag ban is another conversation that I've heard from a lot of residents as well. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that it is stuff we hear about often and I'm sure some of you guys have also heard as well. So I just wanted to put that out there. But obviously, those get very complicated, so. So basically, our next step will be, and we can still have more discussion about this, but as most of you guys know, we'll be meeting for the strategic plan workshop next month. So like with whatever feedback we get from tonight, we're going to take it back to our SPAC meeting next Wednesday, kind of talk about it, revamp, and then come to you with our recommendations next month. There's obviously going to be, I do think the education portion of this is going to be huge. So I think that's probably going to be the biggest starting point from where we're going to go. I think it's going to be research on our end that we are willing to take on. And I think that we've, from, based on a conversation that we had at our last SPAC meeting, I think we would be willing to combine with the NRC if they would, you know, if they're willing to combine with us. Well, if we do something joint together or if we partner up in some way, maybe not on everything because obviously they're volunteers, we're volunteers. So we try to be mindful of, you know, the extra jobs that people have to do. But I think they would be a great resource in helping us, you know, get off the ground, especially if we do decide to put some updates on the website. They might be able to give us more insight into that as well, I think. But yeah, so other than that, yeah, our plan is to go to the workshop next month and take the recommendations. We'll be meeting with City of Geneva representatives will be there as well, people from the city over there. And hopefully, we'll have some, have some good recommendations for the next coming year. Does anyone have any questions about anything we've talked about? Alderman Bruno, yes?
Is a city council priority?
Yeah, it wasn't, I don't think that, I don't think that was a budgeted item. I'm not sure if that was a budgeted item or not, because I believe, because from my understanding, the council priorities are, you know, that they're the priorities that have already been budgeted for.
The council...
Oh, sorry, my mic was not on.
The council priorities are the ones that at last year's strategic planning, you all did kind of a little voting exercise and those are the ones that rose to the top. And those are the ones that we focus on for the upcoming year. It doesn't mean that EV3 is never a priority because it's still part of the plan. It just means it's not the near future. It might be the next, if that makes sense.
Becky, I'm sorry, what was that website that you referenced earlier, please?
Oh, sure, Earth 911.
Thank you.
Alderman Burkhardt, did you have something as well?
Yeah, I wondered if, since Winnie's here, she would be able to tell us a bit about the Diversity and Equity Task Force. And I know they just got started this summer, but how's that going?
That's a very open-ended question, but it's going really well. I think that one of the things that I think we are proud of as a strategic planning committee is not only the amount of people who interviewed and who applied, but the way in which the individuals that we selected have been working together because that was one of our priorities, is that if we're going to create a group of individuals who are setting forth on this task that is very difficult to define, and it is very difficult to understand what the objective is, and they have to create that mission together, that one of the major goals was to create a team of people who were comfortable working with one another to do that. So I can say that in my observations over the three times that we have met, it seems as though that part of it has been successful. I think that the individuals on the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force are really enthusiastic about their work and about coming up with a mission that they think will truly be beneficial for Geneva. And it's been wonderful to be there and participate with that. I think the things that we've accomplished so far are really, again, getting to know one another and figuring out exactly how to move forward with tangibles, which I think we can all appreciate in this work, can be very difficult to pin down something specific that we're going to do, that we can say we've met these objectives, we've created this work, we've done this thing. So, but yeah, I think it's going very well in that way.
Well, thank you, to say, you know, that's...
That we've talked about and it's one of those big issues that we've just kind of kept rolling around. And so I really appreciate all of you for taking the lead on that and getting some progress on that front. So, thanks.
I can say personally that I was very enthusiastic. I think they were as well. I feel like we really accomplished something. It was the, it was one of those moments where you felt like, this is why I'm here and why I volunteer and why I participate, you know. So, and I think, I don't think I'm, yeah, okay.
I agree with that, too. I remember one night when we were doing our interviews, we went outside and I, we just felt good about ourselves. We just felt like, oh, we're actually getting stuff done. Like, this is nice. Because sometimes, you know, when you're doing the census and, you know, we do a lot of busy work, so that doesn't always show. We don't always have a lot to show for it, but it was nice that we, at the end of the day, did have something to show for it. We have this great task force with some wonderful people that are going to be able to bring a lot to this town and something we really need. And I just, it's just very exciting. So it was very rewarding, I think, for all of us. It was awesome.
And not to change the subject as well, but I do think that the numbers in terms of the people who completed the survey are something that we should celebrate as well because from my understanding, the amount of individuals in any town that complete this type of community feedback survey are usually pretty low. And so to get 120% increase, I think we're going to take sole credit for that, right?
Yes. And it wasn't like that short of a survey. I mean, like, this is a 20-question survey, 21-question survey. So people, the fact that people were, that, you know, over 600 people were willing to sit through it and fill it out, that's a great point. Like, that's, it's a huge deal that, you know, maybe people are starting to, you know, pay attention and they want to get more information about the city. So again, education, which is why we want to keep on, you know, doing what we can to educate anybody that we can in the town so they can get involved and help us meet our goals. Because we're not the only ones that, you know, go, you know, that try to reach these goals within the strategic plan. It's a big community effort, so.
Last question on the Diversity and Equity Task Force. When do you anticipate presenting something to us with progress made or mission statement or work done performed so far?
You know, we haven't discussed, they've been working on the mission statement in the last meeting that we had was everyone sort of presented what they had so far and it was, you know, I can imagine them having a mission statement within the next couple of months. But, you know, you meet once, once a month. So to actually come up with something official, I could see that being, you know, again, a mission or an objective coming in the relatively near future. Is that something that you're interested in? Is there something official where we plan on presenting that? Or is that something that you're interested where the diversity task force, you know, has your, has your attention or has not?
I think when we set it up, there were...
Yeah, I think there are some timelines within how we set it up, but they're not, they recognize that it's going to take time.
Sure.
And for the committee, the task force to come to some resolution. But certainly, I think there's a two-year kind of timeframe that they come back with some solid recommendations, which I think would then include. But obviously, as you go through things, if there are things that come up, let's say, hey, this is a good, this is a good update point. We are always available for that. But certainly, not to rush the process.
And my question was not to rush it, but just to get a rough idea. And it would be nice to have some sort of update next year and not say, you know, it's a two-year process, we'll see you in two years.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, I don't want to speak out of turn on you, but, and maybe this is more a question I can ask you, but they're going to have to budget for the group eventually. So they're going to have to, I, it was my understanding that they were going to try to come with something for the 2023 fiscal year so they can have a budget. So if they need to do community engagement or have public speakers, they could, you know, put that together and then present that. And I don't know if that's coming to the strategic plan workshop this year or not, if there's going to be any sort of mention of a budget for the DEI. But I do know that it's something that's been discussed because they eventually may need one, so. I just turned everyone off. Is there any, I know we're talking mostly about environmental stewardship. Is there any part of the plan where council, you felt that we should still continue to be working on? Obviously, you know, we really want to go full force with environmental stewardship. But if there's, was there other things within our plan that you feel that we should be working on? Because again, we're going to go back to SPAC next week and we're going to, you know, if we think that environmental stewardship is going to be our, our main mission for next year, we're going to start coming up with the action items and the different things that we're going to do to get that going. And it's okay if you don't know right on top of your head, you can always contact one of us. Alderman Bruno?
I won't answer your question because I'm going to have to put that in the part I'm supposed to. So if you ever believe it up, like, something that's, for years I've been wanting to get this river held or what's the future of that, I know the case is over that. So I'm curious to get that action out, if you're in our station.
And that's also something that's currently being worked on within the plan as well that's been passed, right? And the sewer groundwater resources. So it's obviously something we'll continue to, yeah, work on. But I, yes, I agree.
Anybody else? Mayor Burns?
Madam Chair, with respect to the stewardship angle, all of us in this room, I believe, are aware of the comprehensive study done with respect to stormwater management and the implications of that study moving forward. There was a report presented by our Department of Public Works. Long and short, we're looking at tens of millions of dollars to improve the system we currently have in place. How do we do that? There lies the rub. Many communities are choosing to enact a stormwater management tax. And I'm not saying that for the record that we are, but there are limited options available in terms of addressing the reality that we have systems in place that were built 40 years ago that simply can't keep up, keep up with the frequency and the ferocity of storms we're experiencing now.
I think that, I think that's a good point and it's something that city council and the residents are going to struggle with, is trying to figure out how to, not only the stormwater plan, but the presentation that was given to city council about the, you know, the condition of the existing buildings, like fire station number one, city hall, the police station. You know, there's definite, there's definite costs there to maintain and improve these buildings, to get things up to code or how they should be used in today's environment. So, I mean, it's a difficult conversation to have with residents, you know, and how that stuff's going to get accomplished. So, I don't want to go really into it more than that, but I just, you know, it's out there. It's something that if SPAC can somehow try to help, you know, you know, carry some of that weight, you know, I'm sure that we could have that conversation and be happy to do that.
And also, I just want to mention, too, that, you know, if we leave here tonight and you come up with an idea that you just felt, you know, that just didn't get talked about or something that just comes to your mind tonight while you're laying down in bed, just let us know because, you know, like I said, we're brainstorming. We're working off of each other, we're trying to come up with ideas. This is, this is going to be a long process, I think. This isn't obviously something that we're going to, you know, we're going to work on it this year, but it doesn't just end at the end of this year. So, are we, you know, is this going to be something we work on this year and then the next year? And then just work on different goals within the environmental stewardship? So again, if you, like I said, if you have any, anything that comes to your mind, please send myself and Ben an email. So that way, we can bring that to SPAC next week and then that way, we can be completely prepared. I can be completely prepared with everything next month when we go to the strategic plan workshop. Does anybody else have any? Yes, Alderman Mayor?
So, on the line of facilities and to the facilities... I wonder if maybe there's a way to do a survey of our staff and our firefighters and police workers that drills into that a little bit and maybe ask them about their satisfaction with their working conditions. What I saw in some of the facilities, I don't think I'd really want to work in a place like that. So if we... Because of people? Because of some of our facilities, I think that's a really bad city. And could be a nice segue into why we need to improve things around here.
And I would mention, I think it's only been maybe two months ago, I don't know, I have no concept of time anymore. But there was an employee engagement kind of survey that went out that had a couple of those questions in there. And Ben will likely be presenting some of that information at a later date to the council.
Okay, I'm going to ask again. Does anybody have any other questions, comments, concerns, complaints? I mean, I can take complaints, too. So I guess I'll go, if we're not, if we're okay with this, I'll move on to, do you want me to move on to new business and public comment? Or I just, I want to leave here tonight, you know, knowing that we have the support of council to move forward with environmental stewardship. I want to know that, you know, obviously, things will come up to council that will have things pertaining to this topic, you know. So I hope that when those things come to city council, that, you know, we, we remember that, you know, this was something that we all agreed on. We want to work towards environmental stewardship. So, you know, because we want to put our time into this. So we just want to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page. So if you guys feel, if you guys don't feel that environmental stewardship is the way to go next year, you need to tell us. So, but...
Very supportive.
Yes, thank you. Okay, well, if nobody else has anything else to add, I'll go ahead and move to new business and public comments. Do we have anybody? I don't think there's anyone calling in tonight.
Yeah, there's no one there.
No one? Okay. And we do have a gentleman... And we do have a gentleman in the back?
Okay.
Okay, okay, great. Does anybody have any new business?
You mentioned it earlier, but I think we would be remiss not to mention that Ben and his wife had a new baby boy, Edison, I believe it was last Thursday.
Yep. He's got all E-names now.
Yeah. Ethan Everett and Edison. So congratulations to him. So he will be off for a couple of weeks, taking care of mom and baby, but everybody, from what I understand, is doing well.
And he is still being so helpful, even though he's been away, he's been checking in with us, and he called me tonight.
Isn't that supposed to?
I know. He, I didn't bother him. He called me, he called me at 5:30.
Don't answer it.
Next, all right, noted. All right. And then I guess I need a motion, if we don't have any more public comment, I'll need a motion to go, and this isn't our closed session, I'm assuming.
So I mean, you can probably, at this point, turn the.
Mics off?
Over to the mayor.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Burns. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I proudly recommend a motion to go into closed session on the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body. Is there such a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion. Alderman Bruno makes the second. A voice vote.
Roll call.
Excuse me, a roll call vote is in order, and then after the roll call vote, assuming that it is a majority to adjourn to closed session for that expressed topic, we will then take a break and clear the room.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
There is no action being taken tonight, for the record.